Welcome to the May 25th, 2023 regular session of the Milford School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being broadcast by Milford TV and copies can be obtained at the request of this board or through the central office. So great to see everybody again tonight. Our first agenda item is the MHS Student Representative Update. So Vidi and Andrew, thank you for joining us.
Okay, so one of the first things that has been going on in MHS is that spring sports are coming to a close. Many spring sports teams made it to playoffs. Pretty sure girls softball and lacrosse made it to playoffs, so yeah.
And some individuals on the track team, they made it to states, including the boys relay teams, the four by four and the four by one.
Also going on tonight right now is the Dick Corbin Athletic Awards. And also this coming Monday on Memorial Day, the marching band will be performing in the parade. Also tomorrow is the senior prom that's going to be held at Omni Hotel in Providence.
And May 31st is Senior Awards Night, so seniors are going to be honored with like scholarships, awards, accomplishments, and they'll also get to like, you know, I think, is that the talent night? That's not the talent night.
Not the talent night, no.
No.
So actually, the talent night is on Thursday, June 1st, and it's going to premiere the 2023 lift up, and there's going to be a senior talent show. Also graduations coming up on June 4th. So a couple, there's been a couple growing concerns among students in the school. Some have complained about the ceiling tiles, there's a hole in the upper A wing. That's, that's something that some students have brought to our attention. And also they've been complaining about the trash and general sanitariness of like the school. There's been mice found in some of the classrooms and the courtyards, pretty, it's just trash after the lunches there. There have been some efforts to, to clean up. There's, there was a, about two weeks ago, there was a spring sports cleanup where all those sports teams met, and they cleaned up the athletic facilities. And also there's been events organized by Mr. Ottland to clean up the courtyard.
They get volunteer hours and like, you know. And then a lot of people, I think, especially girls, I think they've been complaining about like bathroom hygiene and how like people spend a lot of time in the bathrooms, like getting in and out. So there's like long lines to get to the bathroom. So if you're going from like English class or whatever to go to the bathroom, it's like takes a total of like 15 minutes and I don't, it's like kind of annoying because if you want to get back to class, you have to like, sometimes I just go to a different bathroom and I think a lot of my friends do the same thing. So that's something that's been like an ongoing complaint, especially like the loitering around too. And I know like Student Advisory Council, we're working on that for next year. So it's like, we're getting there, but it's not like fully fixed yet. And then a lot of students have been talking about how there's a lot of assessments in school, which is like fine, but it's coming to the point where it's like, it takes away from like learning time, where now instead of learning, we're taking more like assessments because in our high school schedule, you drop a class once a week. So you only get four days of learning and most of the time you have an assessment once a week that takes away another day. That's like three days a week. And then one of those days, it's like test or quiz review. So that gives you about two days of learning. And a lot of like my friends have been saying that they don't, it's like teachers have to like rush to get stuff done because you don't get enough time to like get the learning in. And it's had like a negative impact on like their mental health in a way, and a lot of pressure has been like put on them to like get this done, get this done. And it's like a lot for a lot of students. But I know a lot of teachers have been working on doing like projects or like presentations. Like I know in English, we used to like a Socratic seminar as a test sort of thing, which is really cool. But a lot of students feel like it's not enough to like help ease the pressure off of them. And that's all we have for our update.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Open up to the board, if you have any questions, go ahead, Michael.
So the assessments, are these like routine tests or is it something, like explain?
So my friends, at least when they're talking to me, they were talking about how like quizzes and tests, it's just like they're coming too soon almost. Like you have one quiz and like, oh, right after, here's the next one. And then right after that, here's another test. Like not enough time in between to like prep, to like understand the material fully and like really grasp what you're learning. Instead, you're just studying for the test to get like an A. Like you're not actually understanding the material because you're racing for tests almost. But yeah, they're like daily, they're not.
Okay, so just normal curriculum tests?
Curriculum tests, yeah.
You know, Mr. Consigliere, Dr. Consigliere is in charge of all the curriculum, so good feedback for him.
Written down.
So I agree. I think that I'm really very proud to hear that you are kind of standing up for, you know, your fellow students bringing this up. I think it's great that Dr. Consigliere is hearing that. I'm also wondering if at the high school itself, is there any type of mechanism for you to provide feedback? Maybe not just you, but I'm thinking like the student leaders, the student government to provide feedback within the high school itself, to the teachers, because I think it's really wonderful you're bringing it up here, but your teachers are the ones who need to hear that, right?
Yeah.
Because they're the ones who are doing the assessments and I'm sure many of them would love to hear feedback from the students directly. You know, they're here because they want you to learn. And so if students are feeling like they're not, I, I would encourage you. So I don't know if you know that or not, but if not, I would reach out maybe to your student government too, or either of you.
I am.
So do you know if you have any opportunity?
We don't have anything, like I know usually we don't have anything that can like allow us to like say something like that unless we're just talking to a teacher like casually about something.
Yeah.
Like there's no like formal, like Google form or like something like that that we can like fill out. At least student leadership doesn't have.
Do you have an advisor for that?
For student government?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is that someone you could bring this idea to?
I don't think they would honestly, I don't think that's like what they do. Because I feel like they plan more like our events, like class events, like prom, like the auction, like stuff like that. Not really like, they don't really do the academic side of it.
That's fair. I just think it would be helpful to have someone at the high school directly that you could give this feedback to.
Matt?
So just one comment off what Robyn just said. As, as one of seven elected people here, don't underestimate the power of casual conversation with your teachers and people. They do hear it and the more they hear it, the more it's going to register. And I also wanted to commend you guys, I know that you're relatively new to that position, but I think Haley would be very proud about, of how you guys sat down and brought some issues that can be hard to, to share with everybody here. So thank you for doing that. That's the kind of stuff that we do want to know because that's how change happens. Took a note about the bathroom piece. Can you explain that a little more? So just that there's just too much, too many people taking too much time in there? Does it feel like there's not enough available stalls or something? Like what's, what's going on with, with that?
I don't think it's that there is not enough, at least for the girls bathroom. Andrew can probably talk about the boys bathroom, but at least for the girls, I don't think it's that there's not enough stalls. Like it's the same amount of stalls like in Woodland and like here, it's like not a difference. I think it's just that people kind of wait around, like they kind of like stand there, like they'll stand in the stall or like wait like for 10 minutes until their pass expires and then they'll like walk around the halls, which is fine, that's not in the bathroom, like whatever. Or like there's like vaping, like stuff like that, which like you can't, like there's nothing we can do about it as students because like unless we report it, which most of us do, like at the moment, you can't really do anything besides walk out and go to another bathroom. So I think it's mostly just like loitering and vaping, at least for the girls.
So for the boys bathroom, it's, there's a, there's a few people standing around usually, but it, there's been a few times where I've seen that it's been kind of full and there's not really a lot of room to like go like do your business or whatever. But, but it's not as bad, I'd say, as the girls bathroom, but yeah.
Okay, thanks for sharing.
Any other guests? Go ahead, Michael.
Last thing, just so you guys know, we actually have facilities on our agenda items. We'll be talking once the other issue that you brought up.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And from my side, thank you for being that conduit, you know, that voice from, you know, the entire student body, right? So we know that these issues aren't just what you see, but it's what the, a lot of the student body in there reporting to you. So I think it's great. I know that Mr. Agagianian, last time, you know, you were here, asked for this, this type of report. So I commend you for getting that information and bringing it to us. And, you know, I think that you, you heard some questions from, from other board members of like, we want to hear these types of things because we want to be able to help you out and resolve these issues. So again, thank you very much for being that voice for the, the student body to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are clear to go. Utilize your seats for our next guests that are going to come.
I'm going to stay.
More than half is, you're, you're welcome to stay. Just want to let you know that we will need your seats.
Vidi can stay put.
Oh, she can?
She belongs here.
Oh, you better.
And, and these, these two young ladies as well.
So excellent, well, thank you. So our, our next agenda item is a recognition of our MHS Green Team. So Ms. Cote is here to, to introduce our Green Team and tell us a little bit about what they've been up to and a, a recognition that they've, they've received.
Yeah, we met with a representative from Planet Aid today because we won third place in a clothing drive contest that we sort of entered on a, well, okay, sure, we'll, we'll do that. And with almost a minimum of effort, we now have a check of $500. So like, wow, really cool, this straight into the student activities account, which can serve us well potentially next year. These three young ladies, Jessica Calories, Elsie Sollerland, Vidi Rival, have served as three of my four captains this year, and I really am advising them, but I think we all have a desire to improve the school as a whole and to hopefully spread some of that to the community. So when Vidi and Andrew mentioned a moment ago, like the trash around the courtyard, oh my gosh, yes, it is awful. This has actually been our current project, and I'm going to pass it around. I had hoped that you would have a blurb somewhere on your desk that would tell a little bit about what we do. This is in, I couldn't tell you which language, not one, not one I speak, Spanish. Okay. At any rate, we had, we have actually spent the spring working on these recycling boxes in an effort to again try to reduce the trash around the building and to hopefully make it clear that we want some things actually recycled and not just in the trash. They are intended to be, of course, brightly colored. We got, God, when did we get this going?
February.
February. So this has been sort of a long haul. They've only ended up out in use over the last week or so.
Two weeks.
Two weeks now. We had members from the Building Trades class put these together for us. This simple plywood with holes in the top meant to make it really clear that we only want bottles and cans, no food. Once it was put together, we did go, and this is where the, the check will come in handy, we did go buy some paint from Ace Hardware and the girls have spent a lot of time, I should include appendix in that, I'm really sorry. Some, some of the guys have been really busy painting, painting, painting. So you can see some of the, the characters, we have sort of an ocean box and a.
Green box.
Green box. I don't, I don't know, forest box, whatever. At any rate, it is meant to catch hopefully people's attention. We did go, we, we met today, of course, to get the check, but also to go check on our boxes. Moderate success so far. Granted, it's only been two weeks, but we did find a croissant, one chocolate, one, one, I don't know, bacon, egg and cheese, whatever it is, you know? And then several little bits and pieces, so we fished the trash out. We're hoping to push a little further. I am thinking at this point, like we need to stand up at lunch and go, hey, guys, it seems obvious to us that, hey, it's a brightly colored box, it's not meant to be the standard trash, but apparently we are not getting across to everybody yet. So if this goes well, I would like to expand and put one in the front lobby and one in the gym lobby. And then I have this even crazy idea that maybe we could get one at the turf, at the entrance exit points of the turf to try and build sort of a, an ethos, a whole, you know, like we're accustomed to sorting because it makes a difference in the long run. Beyond that, last year we did a tree planting that I know, do you still have your tree?
It did not make it.
Ah, rats! So we planted seven trees on property that we distributed last spring about, was it 250?
Yeah.
250. Some were just this big, some got bigger of different varieties. We put seven on property with Jim Azem's guidance and four are still going. The bunnies got to two and one, one just didn't make the winter. But anyway. And we've also done a clothing drive, costume and clothing drive in Halloween. This was Jessica's idea to address fashion and the waste, which kind of plays into this whole Planet Aid routine as well. So both last year and this school year, we have collected clothes and costumes and then just redistributed for free through our cafeteria here. So we look forward to doing that again next year and hopefully spreading boxes a little further. That's what we're about and I just wanted you to know. I'm really not here looking for pats on the back, but.
Well, I brought you here to pat you on the back.
Well, thank you.
Because obviously you did the legwork, you now have $500 to be able to utilize to expand your program. So, you know, I felt like it was, it was great for the committee to be able to hear about your program, hear some more about it. So I'll open up to the committee members now if they have any questions about the program and where it's going. So Matt?
Stay strong and patient with the recycling. That can be hard for adults, that can be hard for society in general, so give it time. I'm sure that'll catch on. I'd love to see that expand down to Stacy, maybe with us.
I would too.
I mean, that would be fantastic.
If we could even get it down to the lower schools so it just becomes second nature.
By the time they get here, it'll be.
Yes.
A beautiful habit, so great job. I really like everything you guys are doing. I think it's an excellent, excellent gesture and it's a great mental shift for, for the older generations to start taking care of stuff like that.
Thank you. Thank you.
You have anything, Mike? Sorry? Good job.
Yeah, fantastic job. What do you need help with, with in terms of like marketing? So like Michael and I are the marketing subcommittee. How can we get more information? Because I think it's great that you have the flyers out, you know, to Matt's point, you know, adults also need to be educated on this and maybe something that we could.
Yeah, I actually.
Post on social media, send out with other things in the mail that kind of go out, so yeah.
I hadn't really thought about it. Again, we were aimed at the student body and again, this is cleaning the courtyard too, as Andrew and Vidi both referred to. Mr. Ottland has done some cleanups out there. And again, this is hopefully going to improve that a little. We were focused on students and again, like yes, letting you all know about it here is a start. I don't know, Kathy, this may be like, do you guys, Craig, do y'all even get like the announcements up there? Do you even read the announcements up there? I mean, no offense, I get it that you may not.
No pressure.
No pressure there. You know, like, because it's, it's in our daily announcements as well and I can totally understand.
We have the announcements piped into the central office, so the morning.
So you in theory hear them, cool.
But it's because we're in this building, we don't get Woodlands announcements or anybody else's.
No, and I can understand that because you're not specifically tied to a single school, but you're working for all of them, that that might not be totally appropriate, but that's a good idea.
Yeah, the other thing too, I mean, going to select board meetings, I mean, a lot of people watch those typically than this, so that may be just a way to report, this is what we're doing. The select board will sit all, say lots of praises to you, rightfully so, but it might be a good way to get your message, you know?
And then I'm going to poke at town hall.
Yes.
To do something, but we'll see. Yeah, okay. Good, thank you.
You just poked that guy right there.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah.
Well, one thing that I think is really neat is seeing that the recycling bins that you made, and it reminded me immediately of what the Town Cultural Council did with the different trash cans around town.
Yes, yes.
And so I think that's really neat too, like thinking about just how it's tying the district and what we're doing into, you know, other groups throughout the town. How large is the, I apologize if you had mentioned that, how many students altogether are on the Green Team?
Like 10.
10, yeah.
I was going to say, I probably have a, if you want to call it mailing list, of a list of students that may reach as high as 15, but what we regularly see will be anywhere between six, eight, 10, depending.
And did this originate from student interest or was it your?
It was a couple of years ago, a young lady has graduated last year. Actually came to me during the pandemic with, wow, I'd really like to, you know, is there something we could do? And I was like, ooh, well. And so actually, I think Josh put her, I mean, I had her as a student anyway, but I think Josh steered her to me as I was not in the building for the year we did the pandemic.
Okay. And then the last thing, I'll just say, sorry, I think this is such a neat idea. So it's really great to hear about good things in the meantime, the schools, just kind of tagging onto what Matt was saying with the other schools, I think if you're up for it, what a great idea it would be. I love the fact that this is a campus and you have preschoolers in the basement and the directors here in the room too, and then you have Brookside right there. And so, you know, the younger kids, if we're talking about wanting to start this early, what better models than students who are doing it? You know, us as adults, sure, we're meaningful, but other students are really, really powerful. So, you know, I know that we're getting to the end of this year, but that would be a really fun goal for next year maybe, to reach out to the younger kids.
I was going to say, now I'm going to have a task of the Building Trades class. So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you, Robyn.
So I'll just, I'll just agree and echo what everybody else said, great job. But one thing I picked up on is you said you had to, you know, you went and bought some paints and supplies for this project. Going forward, you may want to reach out to maybe us as a start. There's a lot of business owners in town that would support something like this with, with a small donation. I know, I know that some, I won't name anybody right now, but they've, they've done some donations at the, at the youth center, of course, Brendan, so, you know.
Yeah, they're extremely generous.
If, if, if we, if, if the word gets out to us or to others in the community, you know, it can only benefit your, your students and your activity funds and, and that, so great job everyone.
The theater workshop was generous in terms of, the crew loaned us some paints as well, so a whole collection. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Well, thank you to the committee, appreciate it. Thank you for coming in to present. You know, again, I think it's great of what you're doing, you're also working with the Building Trades that, you know, so you, you see that connection between the two groups. So yeah, as Matt had said, just keep pushing the message and, you know, I think you've got some other great ideas that you'll be able to run with for the start of next year, so best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, your next agenda item will be the approval of minutes. First set of minutes is for the public hearing that was held on May 11th and that was for the FY 2024 budget. Any discussion on the, on the hearing, not seeing, so looking for a motion to accept the minutes. Motion by Michael, accepted by Matt, all in favor. That is unanimous, great. Next set of minutes is from the regular session held on May 11th, 2023. Any discussion or concerns? John?
I'd make a motion to approve those with a slight edit that on item number 14 where it says, the motion was made to adjourn the meeting, the, it was actually just made, motion to move into executive session. It's just a tiny formality.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions or concerns? All right, so motion by John, seconds by Matt, all in favor. And that is unanimous with those modifications as John specified, so excellent. The next set of minutes were for the executive session also held on May 11th. I'm going to request that we pass that over. There's a little bit of content that I think needs to be added in on that. I apologize that it didn't get filtered in properly, so I own that.
Well, no, I think it was, it was premature until we had a, a meeting today to, to finalize some of, some of what came of that executive session and distributed some, some communications. So it, it just wasn't complete, but through nobody's fault.
Yeah, all right, well, thank you for that. All right, so again, everybody okay with passing that over? Great, thank you on that. All right, next agenda item is going to be announcements, correspondence and distributions. Any committee members have anything on announcements, correspondence, distributions? Not seeing it. Dr. McIner, you have one?
Yeah, I do have one. And I, and I shared this with the committee previously, but I felt like it was worth sharing more broadly. Josh Ottland and Milford High School senior Tessa Skrimger and I attended the Massachusetts State Board of Education meeting this past Tuesday. Josh and Tessa presented and answered questions on the use of cell phones, cellphone policies and mobile devices in place in the Milford Public Schools. I may be biased, in my other hometown of Concord was one of the four other districts presenting to the board on this topic, but our student administrator testimony was by far the most thoughtful and articulate. They were both featured in local television news stories and there was an article in the Boston Globe this morning quoting them. We were selected because of our approach and success with managing cell phones and other mobile devices in the school setting. You know, I, I think nobody's doing this perfectly, but I think we're doing it pretty well here in Milford. And I'd say that on the middle school level as well. And again, both Josh and Tessa did, did an amazing job. And it's, it's interesting, the Board of Education is really looking at kind of technology, artificial intelligence and, you know, particularly cellphone use in schools and ways to kind of look at that because they are so addictive and such a distraction that it's something that I think they're looking at at the state, at a statewide level. So kudos to our, our team for their present, their presentations and their excellent responses to the State Board members' questions earlier this week.
And I have just one thing to add too. So just on Saturday, May 13th, 250 of our, our scholar athletes and a handful of coaches embarked on a cleanup effort now that you heard Andrew talked about, over multiple playing fields around our community. This included the MHS turf and track facility, the softball field, the back, the back practice and playing fields at MHS, the turf at Woodland, the Fino baseball field, the tennis courts and town park. So again, it was 250 of our scholar athletes and they began at 8:00 AM on a Saturday, so I want to commend them for that. You know, also I want to thank our, our Director of Athletics, Pete Boucher, for coordinating this effort. And thank to the MHS boosters and all the parent volunteers for serving breakfast to all of the athletes. Obviously unfortunate, Mr. Boucher is not here and nor could the booster representatives be here as they are, tonight they're conducting the Dick Corbin Athletic Awards Program, so for our very scholar athletes. So I want to commend Mr. Boucher for his efforts in creating a great teamwork building event that was beyond the playing field, so thank you to Pete. All right, so moving on to invitation to speak. Seeing anybody here for invitation to speak, so our next agenda item is our Shining Star Representative with a handbook in school improvement.
And we're in that season again, folks.
Yes, exactly, so. Dear time of year.
That's right. Hello, everyone. So I will start with the school improvement plan. I will give you a recap on our goals from this past school year. So in your handbook in Appendix A, you will see that our first goal for the 2223 school year was for the staff to develop common assessments for ELA in mathematics. And the ELA portion of this goal was met. The staff met to discuss, develop and collaborate on common literacy assessments. They created assessments within the area of letter ID, concepts of print, sequencing events from a story read aloud, and created a common speaking and listening checklist. The mathematics portion of this goal was partially met. The staff, we have four math units down at Shining Star and each requires a common assessment. The staff did create one assessment for unit one. The assessment was created, field tested and adjusted based on the administration of the assessment, so we will carry this goal over to the 2324 school year so we can finish that work up. The second goal was focused on social emotional learning and the goal was for the staff to finalize the SEL Scope and Sequence Guide by adding the approaches to play standards within the document. This goal was partially met. The staff did implement the newly revised SEL Curriculum Guide and the staff did provide, the SEL staff did provide weekly SEL lessons within the classroom. However, the work on adding the play standards to the scope and sequence needs to carry over to the, the 2324 school year. The third goal from last year was focused on re-embedding project-based learning into the daily curriculum on a more frequent basis at the preschool. The staff, this goal was partially met. The staff did engage in a year-long book study where the focus was on asking open-ended questions, which is really the heart of project-based learning at the preschool. And the part that was missing in this goal was the professional development that was focused solely on project-based learning. We had some lofty goals in our school improvement plan and our contractual meeting times and in-service days were focused on the creation of the common assessments for ELA and math. So we have a solid plan in place for next year where we will have professional development opportunities focusing solely on project-based learning for the staff next year. The fourth goal from 22-23 was focused on mathematics, and Shining Star focusing on defining, creating, and facilitating relevant and rigorous tasks in mathematics. It was in conjunction with what the other schools were doing. It's the second pillar of the focus from the Milford Public Schools' math look-for's. So this goal was partially met. During our work on the creation of the common assessments, discussions were revolved around rigorous and culturally relevant mathematics tasks. And this goal will carry over to 23-24 where the rigorous and culturally relevant tasks will be embedded within the common assessments that the staff have, the remaining three that the staff have to create. And then the final goal from 22-23 was a review, a review and revise of our safety protocols down at the preschool. So this work will continue to be ongoing and revisited throughout the 23-24 school year. However, the key actions towards the goal this past school year were that we formed a new safety, a school safety committee. We revised our lockdown and shelter in place procedures. We reviewed the crisis management plan, and we changed the committee name to the Crisis Management Committee instead of the Emergency Operations Team. So I'll move.
Any, any questions on that recap aspect of it? Can I run?
So thank you for that recap of all of these pieces. I will say my own biases when I hear like rigorous and preschool, I get a little like nervous about how much playtime the little ones are getting, but I, I trust that with the other SEL-type standards, they are still getting that. What do you think were some of the barriers? Like, cause I know a lot of the goals, so you had some that were met, all of them were at least partially met. What do you think were some of the barriers in fully meeting all your goals? And the reason I ask this is thinking about the goals for next year, the way you constructed them. Did you consider that in trying to make the goals for next year more fully achievable?
So all of our rigorous tasks, Robin, are developmentally appropriate, and we, we embed them into project-based learning in place. So it's not, they're not seated in with, you know, paper and pencil type tasks, so you can feel confident in that. As far as not fully meeting all of the goals, I think it was a combination of a couple of, couple of things. There, there were lofty goals, and there just was not enough time to complete all of the goals that we had. I think that the teachers were very mindful and were very, they, they took the tasks very seriously as far as creating appropriate tasks for mathematics and ELA that were developmentally appropriate and rigorous for preschool. So they didn't want to rush through the process, and I was fine with that. And our, our math coordinator and our, our reading, our ELA coordinator was fine with that too. Because we, we want an assessment that is in the best interest of the students, and that's appropriate for preschool. So it just is a lot of work that requires more time, but I, I'm confident that we'll, we'll complete them next year.
Any other questions on the review aspect? Not seeing any, so.
I'll move on to this year's school improvement plan. So there are four goals. The first goal is common assessments that are rigorous and culturally relevant for mathematics. So here, the staff will continue to develop the common assessments for mathematics, and our goal is to develop the one common assessment per unit for mathematics. So I, I feel that we do have enough time within our PD schedule mapped out to be able to meet this goal. So the second goal is focused on social emotional learning, and the title of our goal is emotional regulation. And in this goal, the focus will be for the finalization within the scope and sequence to add those, the, add the approaches to play and learning standards within the document. And these standards focus on development and promoting self and social knowledge, self-management, relationship skills, responsible decision-making, initiative, curiosity, engagement, persistence, creativity, cooperative play, problem-solving, organizational skills, and memory. The third goal that we will focus on next year is, aligns with the, the strategic priority initiative of equity and access and continuing learning. The goal title is family engagement and culturally responsive practices. We will focus on building positive relationships and building the capacity of the staff to increase, build upon, and strengthen family engagement and culturally responsive practices at the preschool. To build capacity, staff will engage in conversations on culturally responsive practices using the culturally responsive look-for's rubric, to use as a reflection to, to help guide the conversations during our work within this area. And the fourth and final goal is data-informed decisions. And we will be using data from the multi-tiered Systems of Support Self-Assessment Tool. The staff will implement data-informed decisions using our District Curriculum Accommodation Plan, our D cap, which was modified to reflect preschool standards and preschool students to make sure it was developmentally appropriate. And the reasoning for doing all of this is to ensure that there are successful educational outcomes for all of the students at the preschool level. We have been engaged in conversations on data and what's appropriate at the preschool, you know, for as long as I've been at the preschool. But what was missing and why it's a goal for us next year is that specific time designated, it's called, it's called different things in, in different schools, you might have heard it being referred to as TCT time, that has not been a part of the practices down at the preschool, and that's something that we will implement next year to ensure that we will have that specific time to talk mostly, mostly on data and focus our conversations on data.
Thank you very much. Open it up to the board with questions on the current, or the, the school improvement plan for, for next year.
Yes, Brendan.
Yeah. Goal number three.
Yes.
Can I just say that one more time? It goes, oriented over, you have to cut the word by word. That's about sensibility, is that correct?
Goal number three. I don't have them memorized.
It's okay.
Family engagement and culturally responsive practices.
Okay, so family engagement, I guess is a similar topic. It's like, I just like went on like our website, which the whole district needs a revamp on the website. There was definitely some things that were challenging to like kind of navigate and find. Is part of that object goal included to update the website?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just think it'd be a good, good things, you know.
And we.
I was trying to find information on that, I'm like.
Yeah, those types of things that we want to increase, but we also want to look at the types of opportunities that we're having for our families to engage with our staff and with each other.
Okay, yeah, that's great, awesome.
Brendan, any other questions?
Just one quick question, so thinking about goal one, which is the mathematics instruction.
Yes.
Going back to the rigorous mathematics. I'm just looking at the person's responsible, and I don't know what your thoughts are, just thinking about the population of Shining Star. If the team chair should be part of that as one of the person's responsible, just thinking about what it would look like for the, the students with disabilities there. So I'm not necessarily saying like it's a neat, it's just a thought that I had that I'd encourage you to consider.
That's a great idea. We're really looking to build our teacher leaders down at the preschool, so I think that having our team chair, Melanie, coordinate with our CTL and the members of the math committee, I think it's a great idea, because that can sometimes be a side that, I mean, all the teachers do have special education students in their classroom, but that's our team chair's area of expertise, so. Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Question, Corey, you know, when you look at that, the family engagement part of it, and, you know, you look at the diversity of the Milford community and all that, I guess like, how does that, this goal encompass that diversity in, in trying to reach out to connect with the diversity of our community?
So our EL coordinator has done some work, some PD work with us down at the preschool this year, and that was an area that was glowing to us. We do provide our families with information on what's happening in the classroom. We do have a lot of PTO-sponsored fun events for our families, and a lot of our diverse families are part of those activities. But what's missing are some opportunities for families to come together and engage more with the school. So we have a lot of one-way communication going home with our newsletters. We post things on, and it's an app called Dojo where all of our families are, are members of that, so we'll post pictures, you know, school events, district events. But there are, there's definitely, after we did our self-assessment, we saw that there were gaping holes with opportunities for families to come in. So we have to take a real hard look at that next year. Is it, you know, our families not coming in because of the location of the preschool? So do we look at having events somewhere else in the community where it's easier for families to get to? Do we look at partnering up more with our Milford Family Community Network where they do a lot of play groups during the day and other types of workshops for families? Do we look to engage them more with us? You know, do we look more towards involving, we have a partnership with SMOCK. A lot of our families that, that aren't eligible to come to Shining Star, or if our tuition-paying spots are full, they will go to SMOCK in Medway. But we don't really have a relationship with them other than, oh yeah, we have some open opportunities here. Are we missing something there? So those are the, the areas that we want to look at and come up with a plan to be able to engage our families at this level. And hopefully, they can get in the habit of, okay, engaging with the school, so it will carry over as they move up throughout the grades.
Great, no, thanks, yeah. I was gonna ask that same question about, do you have events downtown? You answered that as far as looking into that aspect, because, yeah, certainly, transportation and location could be a factor in, in that involvement when you're trying to do school events or, or, or school, community-based events outside just the, the hours of the school. So I appreciate that, so, great. And I know that it takes a lot of time and effort to go through and, and create all this, so it was sitting on one of the, the school councils before, right? This is a year-long kind of project that develops, so anyway, I appreciate it. It's, it's hard to believe that, you know, you need such a, like a, like a, a school improvement plan for, for such a young learners down at the preschool. But I think, you know, when you, when you start thinking about the day-to-day and, and trying to engage the needs, it's, it's, it's always a moving target. So I appreciate the effort, again, that's involved with developing this.
Thank you. And, you know, what we feel is are great activities for family engagement, other families may not think that. So I neglected to mention that part of our work next year will be on reaching out to families and seeing exactly what they are wanting. They may not be interested in, I don't want to say what, we're doing a fun activity, I don't want to give it away, but they may not be interested in that for, for next year. So that'll be a big part, is getting feedback from families.
Any other questions in regards to the school improvement plan? So this obviously requires a vote to accept the school improvement plan, so looking for a motion to accept the 2023-2024 school improvement plan for Shining Star preschool. Motion by Matt, seconds by Mike, and then all in favor, and that is unanimous, great, thank you. So we'll move on to the handbook.
Great, so I didn't note it on here, but I, I know, I noticed it when I was coming up here. The date on the, the family handbook that I gave you is wrong, so that will be the first thing that I change. Very minimal changes to the family handbook. Page on, there's an update to the staff list. There's an update to include one of our sessions that was missing, one of our RED4 sessions was missing, so that's included in there. And then the addition of the male modifications policy that you adopted, and the addition of the translation and interpretation policy that you adopted. Other than that, there are no other changes.
Excellent, so now appreciate the, the highlight page, it definitely makes our job easier from here. Any questions in regards to the handbook, the changes that were made? Obviously, there's just one additional change that will need to be made from the date standpoint, but very minor clerical change that we can do there, so. Not seeing any questions. This also requires votes?
It does, yes.
It does, that's what I thought, so. So, motion by Robin, second by Brendan, and all in favor, handbook, and that is unanimous, great. Thank you very much, appreciate your time coming in to present.
Thank you so much. And I just would like to say that we do still have a couple of openings left at the preschool, so if families are interested, they should contact the main office or reach out to me directly.
And openings are filling up fast too, there's not many left.
There's not many left, mostly for our, our littles, our, our youngest group, so. But we do have a waiting list, so that's always hopeful for families, but yes, they should reach out.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Moving on to next gen item, it's going, so looking to, to conduct a vote to allow the superintendent to act on behalf of the school committee to conduct a search for the director of nursing. So the director of nursing is a position that normally is, is, is under the direction of the school committee. Obviously, we're all just very, very busy people, so I think it's in our best interest to, again, give that authority for the superintendent to act on our behalf to conduct that, that search and come back to this board with a candidate that we can go through and hopefully approve, so. So again, looking for a motion to allow the superintendent to act on behalf of the school committee to conduct a search for the director of nursing. Motion by John, second by Brendan, any other discussion, actually, I should have started, I didn't.
I'm just wondering if we should just clarify that we had opened a search and that we're reopening.
I can give a quick update on that.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So, yeah. So, sorry, so it was a motion by John, second by Brendan, any other discussion, questions? All right, then all in favor, and that is unanimous, so.
Just a real quick update. We've reposted the director of nursing position, hope to begin the interview process late next week, early the following week. Excuse me. I plan to invite members of our school committee who are interested and able to participate, and will rather participate when we posted the news. So I'll be, I'll be making that up in the next couple of days to vote, based on the schedule itself.
No problem, and I, you know, I want to thank John for bringing this to my attention. This was something, obviously, they, we started the, the search, and again, this, just from John's side of it, cleans, cleans up the, the action. Just again, to give the authority, so John, have a word said.
Oh, no, I, uh, thank you. I was just gonna say, I'd be willing to participate in the, in the search. I, I did participate when, when our current director was hired. I remember that feels like yesterday, but it wasn't, just the timing of the, the previous search, I, I just didn't have much availability, but I'd be glad to jump in on that.
Yeah, I'll send the dates out, and that's great, I, I welcome the participation.
I'd like to stay on and help as well if the dates work out.
Appreciate that. Yeah, and have the interviews typically been in the evening time, or they?
It's usually late afternoon, early evening.
Okay, yeah.
We try to do them.
Excellent, all right. Uh, next agenda item then, moving on, is going to be the vote to, for the school choice public hearing and participation to vote. So I'll turn that over to you, Dr. McHare.
Sure.
Give the explanation.
Yeah, so each year we have to do a vote on participation in school choice. We can't prevent people from school choosing out, this is just a vote whether we're gonna accept new students to school choice in. Again, this is, this is all contextual with caveats. I'm recommending that we continue to accept school choice students. This has been very limited the last few years because of rising enrollment. We will continue to assess which grades, there may be some opportunity for students to choice in from other communities. And again, I'd say compared to like five or six years ago where we were accepting a lot of school choice students, we've probably accepted maybe a handful the last couple of years, and, you know, we may or may not be able to do that this year, but I'd like to keep that option open.
Any questions in regard to the school choice?
Like right now, it looks like kindergarten won't be an option, for example.
Yeah.
Just off the top of my head.
Probably good.
Thanks, yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, there was a time not that long ago that we were, you know, advocating for, for students to come here, because we were not at capacity, and we were, you know, our school choice numbers had shifted where, at one point, we're, you know, more choiced in than choiced out, and then we were at the point of more choiced out than choiced in, and we were looking for more to choice in or less to choice out. And right now, like, as you said, we're pretty much near capacity.
It is nearly full.
So I'm, I'm certainly in favor of allowing the school choice, and the superintendent, for anybody that doesn't, isn't aware, he decides when the grades are, are open or closed to, to choice in. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, that's correct.
Any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Ron.
At what point do you usually just, like, would it be before, I'm guessing the school year starts, that you would say, we are gonna do these grades, we're not gonna do these ones?
There, there's some will close right off the bat, there's some will accept applications, but we'll wait to decide whether we can accept students in or not. Cause we do have a fair amount of movement that happens over the summer. We try to tell parents, you know.
Uh, we try to tell parents, you know, usually by like early to mid-July.
Okay.
If we can, um, I, I think it's gonna be very limited this year, to be honest with you. There's a couple of grades we have some potential, but I want to make sure we're not getting more students just coming in who live in Milford first.
And if we know, like, offhand, let's say theoretically kindergarten, we're not gonna accept anyone, when we post the information, would we say, like, which grades are open, which grades aren't, or?
You know, basically, kind of how the process works is we have, there's a spot on the web, website that talks about school choice. There's an application.
Mm-hmm.
Um, families reach out to Melissa Bullock, she takes the applications. Um, and, and generally, like, over time, like, we'll probably sit down after this vote and really look at the numbers and look at the number of teachers and class sizes and all those things. And probably close, I'm gonna guess roughly half our grades, um, immediately. And then we'll probably just say, hey, let's, we'll keep these open for now. We may or may not be able to accept students.
Great, good questions, yeah. Because that same, just concerned with, obviously, we're, we're busting at the seams. We're in classrooms at, at Brookside, so to, you know, i- i- is, it's an okay yes vote, knowing that there are very, you know, there's limits to it.
It's gonna be, if we accept anyone this year, it's gonna be a very small number. And I don't even know if we will accept anybody.
Okay, yeah, so, very good. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. So again, looking for a motion to, um, this would be to allow for our, or to participate in the school choice program. So, uh, motion by Robin, second by Michael, then all in favor, and that is unanimous. So moving on to our, uh, MHS facilities discussion, kind of a, added a few items recently this week. Um, just again, we'll, we'll start off with just the auditorium discussion. Um, I mean, we've, we've had some correspondence that's come in, um, in regards to the condition of the auditorium. There's been, uh, you know, a number of dance recitals from outside, um, you know, dance, uh, schools that have utilized the place. And, and some community members have voiced their displeasure over the condition of our auditorium. Um, so, you know, we're just looking to this board, what can we do to address? We'll obviously engage Dr. McIntyre on, you know, what more can be done? Um, obviously, this is a aging building, um, with a aging infrastructure and, and with the hopes that the new building is on the horizon, um, or a revamped building is around the horizon. So it's, you know, it, it's that balance of what do we invest into this current building? But we also know that if we're going to be able to, uh, if we're gonna rent it out to outside, um, you know, agencies, that we want to make sure that it's, it's, it's presentable. So, again, I'm gonna turn it over.
Yeah, if I give a general high-level overview on maybe all three things, and then we can go maybe either item for questions if that works.
Sure.
And I might have Kathy give a quick thing on the, the termite piece, if you can do that. Alright, so, so we've had a number of discussions over the last few years related to the Milford High School facility. I think it's our most talked about facility, um, for a number of reasons. Uh, it's been identified as our priority building for either, as Chris said, a significant renovation, which is probably more likely, or a new building. We have also discussed a number of issues connected to the complex, including the roof, um, termite issues, and the Shining Star wing. And then, uh, and there's been a number of maintenance issues. Um, as, as Chris stated as well, we've received a number of negative, we've received some negative feedback on the auditorium. Um, Clean Co., our cleaning contractor who provides evening services, um, at our three elementary schools, Woodland, Brookside, and Memorial, they do the cleaning at night. Um, completed an intensive cleaning of the auditorium this afternoon. Um, I did, we were talking about doing it Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. I wanted to wait till today because, um, today's the kickoff of the, um, like, senior events is the, our two student representatives. We're talking about Dick Corbin, and then there's a number of events next week. Um, they were, there was probably a crew of about eight folks who were in there for about five hours today, really just hitting every surface. Um, and I, and I think they did a, a very nice job. This, not only will ensure that our auditorium is clean for end-of-year events, but it'll also create a baseline moving forward. So we have like, you know, it's back to where, you know, at least from a cleanliness perspective, it should be. Um, additionally, our new facilities team will be completing an initial assessment of all our buildings when they come on board. Now, Milford High School will be viewed through a slightly different lens as, again, we've identified this facility as our highest priority and the focus of our third submission of the Massachusetts School Building Authority, um, for either a new or significantly renovated facility. We need to have a realistic plan that supports the high school complex building operations and balances that with not over-investing in a building that will be replaced or part of a substantial renovation. This balance can be challenging. Um, but as we continue to operate, the current building's, students must have a safe and comfortable place to learn. I think that's critically important. And, and the biggest difficulty, and this is what we've talked about, I think, and, and John's brought it up a few times, is that if we knew, like, when the, the new building we're get, was gonna come online, I think that would radically change, like, how we approach different things. The challenge is we, the difficulty is we don't know how many years that it's gonna take before we either get accepted into the MSBA program or we take some other approach to the building. Um, staffing and support at the high school this year has been a bit uneven. We've had, um, some retirements and resignations from our custodial and maintenance team and like other areas of our operations. Replacements and substitutes can be challenging to find. Um, you know, with, with teachers, obviously, we try to get, you know, a substitute, we have to get a substitute teacher in front of every classroom. We've talked about some of the difficulties with that this year over the course of the time. With custodians, it's, it's, it's a pretty significant challenge. Um, I'm optimistic with the new facilities team we are forming is entering with new energy, enthusiasm, and a sense of purpose. I'm gonna speak to you more about that next week. Um, and then I wanna op, I wanna first turn it over to Kath to talk specifically about the termite piece. And then maybe we'll open up for questions, however you wanna kind of receive the questions.
So the, the termites have, um, to quote the Milford exterminators, uh, with the termite issue going untreated for the, they believe, six years, they have, at this point, they're recommending removing two walls down in the preschool area. Uh, two different classrooms, two different walls, because they feel as though at this point they really need to check the viability of the interior where there, all the nests are. The good news is, once, once we remove the walls and they get in there to do their review, they will treat it at the end of June. And from that point on, it's a one-week waiting period. We will clean all the nests up and repair our walls, and we should be fine for next year. But it is a, you know, it's going to be a lot of work. And the timing of this with the new director of facilities, um, removing walls, I don't even know where to begin. But, um, that's the update on the termites. A little bit of an update on the auditorium. And, um, I can tell you that the auditorium, if you're talking in terms of seating, that has failed. Um, we, the seating capacity is no longer available to find, to remove and replace. So what, I think it was about ten years ago, we had a reach out by a, a vendor or a school that was actually closing their auditorium. It had the same seating, uh, that's in the area of our auditorium. So we purchased second-hand seats. And that's why there's two different colors in there, if you look at the seat color patents. So we did a couple banks of auditorium seating, to say, ten years ago. But I know there are additional seats that are starting to fail. But, um, the, the last I was aware, we could not find any seats to replace those with.
If I, if I could.
Yes, please.
That's something, though, we could, we could, um, consolidate one section to repair, you know, the rest of the sections and replace one, maybe the center section with, with newer seats. Because they, they're still gonna have a lot of use between now and whenever we, we have some movement on a, on a building renovation. And then I just wanna echo what you said, cause I know this firsthand, that, you know, we, you know, the past facilities team did not get the termites treated in the last two years. They missed a couple of windows of opportunity in February of this year and, and April of the previous year. Uh, this, they were earlier to hatch or whatever they do because of the warmer late winter. So it's, I didn't realize they'd have gone back that far, but it's, um, it, it sounds like, you know, the, the vendor has it under control or will have it under control.
That's the plan.
Matt?
Um, alright, bear with my half-page of notes and cut me off if you've read enough.
So stop now.
Starting with termites, um, do you have a vendor lined up to put walls back?
No, I was hoping for the director of facilities to be managing that.
Makes sense. Just curious, I mean, John probably has a better understanding. I know that they go up and down with busy season as long as we're not stuck with open walls, but, uh, drywall's not that complicated. We can have a volunteer project if we have to.
That works.
And also thank you for that note on the seats, because I did have a couple of people question why we're able to replace some sections and not others. And I said, gee, that's a great question, but that makes sense. I assume auditorium seats are probably sized differently now.
I think so, and I think it's the bolts and how they're built into the flooring.
Sure, probably.
Yeah.
That makes sense. Um, and the general discussion, the auditorium, the facilities, um, all that stuff, um, it's good that we have Clean Co. coming in. I know we've been shorthanded, um, I was just checking on the budget update, um, that you sent earlier. You know, our custodial services has seventy-four thousand dollars of, I'm gonna pretend to call it free cash. I'm sure that the more will be spoken for. But, um, for me, the frustrating point with a lot of this stuff is that it feels like with facilities, shorthanded or not, we've slipped a lot into, uh, deep into a reactive, a reactive mindset where it takes multiple contacts from the community. It takes comments from multiple, you know, student representatives about trash and about broken seats and about bathrooms before we get a clean call. Um, and I think that, in one sense, with a new team coming on board and, and new people, new visibility into the, into the facilities in general, um, that's a start in the right direction. But I think that it goes beyond facilities. It goes all the way up administration, through leadership, through staff. There needs to be more proactive ownership of all of our buildings. Um, if there's trash, pick it up. If there's an issue that somebody has, open the ticket. Yes, it's gonna go to facilities, but, but take ownership in your room, in your floor, in your hallway to check up on that stuff. Make sure it's done, keep ahead of it. I mean, realistically, we want a new high school, but we're looking at, if we're lucky, we're renovating two buildings in the next twenty to twenty-five years. I mean, so, maintenance and upkeep, especially in older buildings, is a priority because the older the building gets, the more it's gonna cost us to catch up when we fall behind. Um, so I'd, I'd really like to see just a, a work on a mental shift, um, as a district to take more pride in our facilities and try to do what we can to keep ahead because, uh, we're learning it. We can't replace things quick enough. And if we could, we could replace three buildings right now, and it would be great. But, um, that's not gonna happen. It's, it's, it's gonna be a long, hard process, but I think that it, it starts at the top and it filters all the way down to, to just getting that focus back on, you know, being prideful. I know a couple of these dance companies spend a lot of their money, um, to come here and they want to be here. One of the, one of the dance owners told me, you know, she, she doesn't want to go anywhere else. This is, this is her town, this is the place, this is where they do the recital. They love coming here. So it's hard to hear that, that, you know, they're just discouraged to the point where it's like, you know, that's the Milford High Auditorium, what are you gonna do? Um, and as a community member, that's not, that doesn't sit well with me. I mean, I know you can't spit-shine something that's really old, and to be in new, it's never gonna happen, but, um, but we can do more. Um, and that's what I'm hoping to see as we go forward and as we get, obviously, uh, more updates next week with facilities and such too, so.
So can, can I just make one comment, a mass comment? Uh, one of the things you, you hit on was, you know, you know, taking ownership and responsibility. And one thing that disappoints me with the high school is, you know, it shouldn't be just the custodians or the maintenance team. It really needs to be the students too.
Sure.
Because, you know, our teachers really aren't generating trash and throwing it in the, you know, hallways or on, you know, in the courtyard. And, and I know Josh is working to kind of build that, you know, personal responsibility back. And that's something that really needs to take place because I think during COVID, like, we expanded where kids could eat. Like, the auditorium was one of those places because of how we had to spread people out. The, the courtyard was one of those places where, you know, prior to COVID, there wasn't a lot of use in the courtyard. And actually, a positive is that, you know, kids, kids and teachers are using the courtyard. Anytime we walk by, when it's a nice day, there's, there's folks out there, which is great. The downside of that is, is there's a lot more trash generated, and we've gotta use these areas responsibly. And that's something I think we really, you know, and I agree with you on the ownership and I think everybody's responsible for the buildings, but I think that everybody also needs to include students. You know, particularly at the secondary level, because I think they get a little more freedom, you know, where, you know, at the, at the elementary levels, you know, teachers are directing kids at Woodland, it's now your time to walk up and put your trash away. Well, we're not doing that at that. And we, I think we're doing that to some degree at the, at the middle school level, because they're being dismissed as they're going out to recess. Where at the high school level, it's a little bit, you know, there's more freedom because they're older students. And with that freedom comes responsibility, and I think we need to kind of work on that too. Because it's, it's, there's, there's some places like that trash is generated where, just a simple thing. And I think our green team alluded to it today too, you know? It's not that difficult to throw plastics in one bin and, you know, trash in another bin. So I think that's something we've just gotta work on. And I know they've been tidying it up a little bit, but I think that's something we've gotta focus on going into. We're not gonna change a culture in two weeks at the end of the school year, three weeks. Um, but it's something I think we need to focus on at the high school level. Like, you really need to take responsibility for your trash, and there's trash barrels all over the building. And there's a lot of trash that doesn't make it into those trash barrels.
No, I think that's an excellent point, um, and that is a group that, that I, that I missed, and you're right. They're, they're at an age here, you're talking twelve, thirteen hundred young adults in some cases that.
Yeah, thirteen and change.
Are more, yeah, are, are more than capable of taking care of, of their own, their own mess. And, and that's a, that's a very good point. I mean, you said it, they're, they're building boxes to make it easier and make it more noticeable. And, and it really is, it really is a full community effort to make what we have last until we get something new. And then once we get something new, make what we have stay new. I mean, it's, it's hard to, um, to hold these places, these are big places, there's a lot of people that go through. But it definitely takes a, a community pride.
I'm agreeing with you in, in, in staying that. So I'm not, I'm not discounting what you said.
No, you're right.
But I'm, but I'm adding to it. I think it's a, it's a critical point because there's, there's an ownership piece from the students that I think has been missing a lot of these conversations, and I think it's critical.
Certainly.
If I can.
Go ahead.
I think I, I said it the last time. We would, ultimately, the principal's in charge of this building. And I don't know, you know, there's certainly plenty of teachers here, but I don't know if it's, um, if, if he's, you know, got an open-door policy where like, that, that he wants to hear their complaints about things that they see or, or what it is. But I think it all starts at the top. I, and students aside, I mean, they, they absolutely should be more respectful and accountable if they're, in fact, throwing this trash and being, you know, um, just clearly disrespectful. But it, it definitely starts at the top. This is, this is his house, and Cory has her house, and, and the other five, but before, we'll be down to. Anyways.
We have five total.
Yeah, so anyways, that, that's, that's my perspective.
I guess on, on John's, that line, that conversation that John brought up, do the custodians report to the principals? Or is it to the facility?
Yeah, through, through Ed, Ed reform, they, they have direct line reporting to the principals.
Yeah.
But the, um, facilities directors always had dotted lines supervision over the, over the custodians. It kind of drives like things like, you know, if someone's out, they work on replacements, you know, they, they schedule like snow removal if there's a project.
Right, yeah. And then from that aspect, if we have a, a weekend event, there's a custodian assigned during that timeframe, but then there's no, like, in a sense, there's no principal supervision, because we're, or obviously, the principal of the school's gonna be here on a, on a Saturday afternoon during, during Matt's kid's dance recital, you know, so. But there is a, I'm assuming there's a facilities, there's a custodian here who's responsible. So I guess I'm just trying to encon, you know, encompass that aspect of it. So it's, as John said, the principal's in charge of this building and its cleanliness. But I guess do we need a weekend supervisor or something? I don't, I don't know, just trying to figure it out.
You know, it's, it's, it's tough to say, cause I think the auditorium in some ways, I don't wanna call it necessarily an outlier, but it is kind of an outlier in the sense that, um, you know, it was, it was in really rough shape. And it, you know, and we needed to get it back to a place, like, from a cleanliness perspective, minimally, where, you know, and, and we had, we had a crew of, I, I think it was about eight people, I don't know, it could have been more than that. There was at least, I counted at least eight one time when I went down there today. And, um, and they were like cleaning every single surface, and it needed it. And it's at a point now where I think, you know, regular custodial cleanings can, can be done. And it's not, you know, to the point where it was, where it was, I think, out of hand. But I would say, you know, on a weekend, Cr- Chris, I would say that, you know, if there's like some kind of issue happening, um, I always, you know, the custodians have the connection, they have, they have the contact information for both the principal and the, you know, again, a facilities director when that person rejoins us. So they're able to contact either one of those folks, or me, because I jump in too, um, when, when a situation arises. So I think there, you know, there's, there's, there's backups there if, if something does happen. You know, like, if we had, like, Friday afternoon, we had a, uh, we had a plumbing issue down in the locker room at the high school. And Kathy's kind of our acting facilities director in a lot of ways.
Copy by Nini.
So we were, uh, yeah, we were, we were kind of going back and forth, and we got a plumber out there and he addressed my situation, so. So I feel, I feel like, I feel like the ability to kind of, and maybe that doesn't answer your question?
No, I don't really have any questions. Mine's more opinions. But, um, and I, I can see that, you know, with all that add activity, it got over the heads of the custodians with their other responsibilities and, you know, they're limited cleaning products compared to a special. The custodians with their other responsibilities and, you know, they eliminated cleaning products and panted a specific vendor to, to probably extract. You know, all the soft surfaces, but it, it just, um. I, I think it just got away from, from the, the administration and I don't mean you because you're in this building, but that's just convenience. You know, there was a time when the administration was in a standalone building in Milford, so it's really not your direct role and I'm sure if. Somebody came to you and said, we have a real problem in the cafeteria, I mean, the auditorium, and we need to find some money and a vendor to take care of it, that you would. Be right on top of it. It just that it took, it took a, a resident to email, I think each of us to, to bring this acute awareness to it and it's. It's, I don't think it ever should've gotten that far. I'm not laying direct blame on anybody, but it's.
No, and I, and I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Mike?
Just to, I, you know, uh, sorry to throw this on, but to John's point, you know, we have principal, two assistant principals and associate principal all in the building. So to, to John's point, it, it's a little sad it, it got to this point with so many administrators who are roaming around, so. So as far as the, I know the staffing of the custodians has been uneven. Have, have we thought about, um, employing some students to help? I know when I was in high school, I used to work for the janitors, uh, part-time.
We do in the summertime, but not during, not during the school year. We haven't done that. Am I, am I correct on that, Kath?
That's correct.
Have you thought about doing it after school? Like, I mean, there's.
Well, the, the square footage has not changed. And, um, we're at the same capacity that we have been. We've removed preschool entirely. We've given that area a dedicated. Half person who starts their day at Brookside. I just think, um. There needs to be better supervision of the night custodians. I mean, you can come in in the morning and see what's happened or not happened.
So, so you're saying that we're staffed enough, it just we need better supervision?
I just think they need, uh, maybe a, a better guideline.
I would say an expect, I would say an expectation reset.
Expectation, yes, of what their responsibilities are. So they do their regular assignment and it might not be enough. So it, it just needs to be reviewed, you know, frequently.
Okay.
So just kind of going off of what Mike was saying, so at this point, I, you know, we know that we are in the process of bringing in a new administrative team for facilities. So in the interim, if I'm a teacher at the high school, let's say, and I put in a ticket, is it reasonable for me to have an expectation that that will be resolved within? Twelve hours, twenty-four hours? It's just, is there a lapse right now that we should just be aware of or is it, are things functioning as they would if we had those folks in place?
So there's two different kinds of maintenance tickets. So we have custodial, which we just brought on board. Was it this year, Craig? Yes, so now we have the custodian tickets and we have maintenance tickets. So the custodian tickets are really around shade, I, my shade's broken, things that the custodians would manage. You know, nobody's emptied my trash, can you do that? And we put, you know, little icons establishing what the need was. Maintenance would have gone to Rob, Clint, or Brian Lorendau to, um, take care of. And I don't, you know, I don't think the custodian tickets are building up. I think, um, it really is a maintenance issue.
So right now, are the maintenance ones being addressed at all or is it just kind of in a standstill?
Well, as of tomorrow, they, they really won't be because we won't have, um, any maintenance department member on staff.
That's a problem. Yeah.
So, so we're dealing with the stuff that has to be dealt with and then I think, you know, ideally, and again, I don't wanna say too much tonight, but hopefully we'll have people coming on board shortly. Then we'll be able to kind of catch up and start getting ahead and getting, you know, ready to close out this year and then start preparing for, you know, for the summer for the opening of the next school.
I was wondering if there's something we need to do as a stopgap, like how we brought in this cleaning company for the auditorium, if we need to contract.
I was gonna ask, Kath, do you have vendors at your disposal if you have something that's.
The, the vendor.
That can't wait. Like you said, buddy, my Nini or.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, we, we can bring people in for situations that need to be addressed immediately.
Right, I mean. Okay, okay. We've managed, I think, pretty well, okay.
Matt?
Um, Cleanco in terms of, of cost, is it, is it feasible? Does it make sense to maybe even bring them in quarterly to tear through bathrooms in high traffic areas? Um, I know we bring them in some schools, but.
You know, we'd rather not do that just because like theoretically, I don't wanna say theoretically. Our expectation are, are that the custodians are, are meeting that in the, in Stacy and the high school where they're responsible for that. Now, this was an exceptional situation because, um, for whatever the reason was, that something really needed to be brought back up to speed.
Okay.
And what'll happen over the summer is, is everything is gonna be hit extensively, so when we open school in the, in the fall, we'll be again in a, in a very good spot.
Okay, and, and we heard from, from our student reps tonight, we heard from, uh, from Haley last time about. Ability to report issues, broken latches, things not working in bathrooms. Uh, where does that stand? Because it's, it's, it's certainly. I mean, I, I know they can go tell teachers, but it seems like nobody knows what to do. With a broken latch on a door in a bathroom or a light bulb out or a sink not working in a bathroom. How, how are, how can we fix that so that if a student has a problem, they can just. Get it there or get it heard, get it reported and, and, and move on. I mean.
I really feel like that's a principal's.
It's absolutely a principal thing, yeah.
Decision on how he wants to put in a mechanism for students. Because it's the high school, they have more of a voice than what you're gonna see at a Brookside or a Memorial School. So it really. In my opinion, it just should be some form of communication that they have, even if it's just a, a box outside the, in the front entrance.
Or even like a process to report it to like their house administrator.
Absolutely. I mean, it, it, I mean, if they're.
Cause I, I worry about opening up like a ticket system for students.
No, you don't wanna, you don't wanna do that, but at the same time, you have, they're bringing it to us, so there's enough of them that care. About this stuff. They should be heard in it. And it's just like anything else, like a teacher, like Robin said, if there's something wrong with facilities and they're old enough to know it, I mean, they should be able to report it. And it should be heard by the people responsible for the building, obviously, so.
My, my recommendation, I used to be an administrator at the high school level, you know, I was also at the elementary level for a period of time, but. I think, you know, using your house administrators or even the, even these administrative assistants in the house offices could very easily capture that information and.
True.
You know, I, I, I don't think that's all that difficult to do.
Yeah, I guess, um, not to like be a dead horse here, the, the, with renters, um, committing to the building, like with, I'm sure they sign contracts. Is that accurate? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, Brandon.
Do rent, do renters have contracts? Like, it's like the dance program that Matt's kids use, like they have to sign a contract?
Oh, yes. No, they get a permit, they understand the rules. There is a policy around, um, how they should leave the building and what the charges are, yes.
Okay, yeah, I, cause I, you know, it happens and, and maybe through no fault directly at the renter, but the people that enter the building, something might get damaged. From that event. So I think again, that's just that consistent follow-up between administrators after events, it would be just more communication, the better. Right? Even if, you know, even if we just find the, you know, bathroom stall gets broken at the dance recital. Maybe we wouldn't even charge the renter. We just, we just need to know about it right away. It's more of the issue, so. That's all I got.
I guess going back to what Matt had said about having a, a, a cleaning agency come in periodically, there's, there's nothing that. There's no restrictions from that side of it, right? Like we have companies.
Well, the same, I'm sorry, finish, Chris.
Sorry, we have companies available that we can call on a moment's notice to come in, so I guess to Matt's point of, of scheduling routine. Cleanings, is that beneficial? We're gonna go back to it.
Well, essentially what we would be doing is, um, I mean, I don't wanna use the strong word violating the custodial contract, but you're indicating. That you need additional staff by bringing in that contractor and you're not moving another staff member forward, which is what. They would prefer than having a vendor come in.
Okay, so yeah, there was some.
So you're mitigating staff.
Yeah, there's some restriction there, right? Yeah, I just wanna make sure on that part of it, cause, yeah, I mean, we, we heard from Haley months ago. We heard from the student representatives tonight. It's the, you know, we heard last year in the, in the speeches from the, you know, the valedictorian, salutatorian. Yeah, so it's like this common theme, you know, and I guess my only part of it too is if the kids are walking through school and it's, and it's raining down on them inside, then. Why do they care to throw their trash in there? So if we're not doing our part to make a, a, a nice school point for them. Why would they care about if that, if that roll of paper makes it into the trash can or not? Eh, who cares? I'm gonna go down to the A wing. I'm gonna have to wear my raincoat anyway, so. Think there's some responsibility on our side too, that we gotta make sure that the facility is, is, the roof over their head. Mimics what we have for an expectation from them too. And, and kind of just from a detailed standpoint, if we're concerned that there's, there's trash around, do we know if there's enough trash cans outside or in the cafeteria? Like. You know, they, they, in a sense, I'll call them out. Are they lazy? They're just not walking over to the trash can or should we have more trash cans in certain locations? We have the green team here that's trying to promote things, but do we promote more trash cans? Some of that.
I would say, you know, you know, I haven't done, I haven't done an in-depth analysis of it, but I.
Right, but.
But I walk around this building a lot just because I'm, I'm in here and there's, there's, I think, a lot of trash cans around the building.
Yeah, but in the areas that are, they're generating more trash, like outside, right? So we're hearing outside, we're hearing the cafeteria, right? So we're not hearing about trash in the hallways, but we're hearing about it in those areas. So I mean, is it a simple assessment to, to make sure and is it. Purchasing more trash cans, right? Does that just promote it?
I think it was, I think it was already kind of summed up. I, I, I get the same sense that the expectations just need to be receptive. Some, some of the people taking care of this, like building or these buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Rob?
I'm almost wondering, just a lot of things, I'm, cause in my thought, the first thing is why are there trash in those locations? Well, that's where students are eating. It's where they have food. It's where they're producing trash and so. Um, you know, like my, if I was like ruler of the school, I would just stop letting them in the courtyard if they can't respect the space, but I, I don't think that's up to me to decide, right? And so I guess I'm wondering if it would be helpful if we wanna continue this discussion, we should bring in the principal of the high school because I think that. His perspective is just the one piece I feel like we're missing here tonight. Um, and I think to be like fair to him to hear, but, you know, I'm sure he's as concerned about that as we are and so. Um, I don't know. I just think it would be a fair thing to do to ask him to be part of this discussion.
No, thank you for that. He'll be in June fifteenth for his school group meeting, so noted on that. We'll make sure that, that is part of the discussion, so. Any other comments, questions in regards to the facilities aspect of M A S? Not seeing any, so, right, well, thank you everybody for their opinions on that. All right, moving on to policy and some second readings. Rob, I'll turn that over to you.
Sure, so, yeah, the first three that are listed here are pretty straightforward. So those are the fiscal management goals, the budget deadlines and schedules, and the fiscal accounting and reporting. And so those policies are presented for a second reading and essentially we are updating our policies to match the model policies, um, from M A S C. So essentially the three of those are really bringing them into line, um, with M A S C. So I don't know if you wanted, needed to go right into therapy dogs or if we wanted to talk about.
Let's, um, we'll go, uh, you wanna go, we'll go through the easier ones first, I guess, right? So the, the, and then with therapy dogs being last, I know that was more something that people had some.
Yeah, that's what I figured, makes sense. Yeah.
Some, um, questions on? So I guess, yeah, first from the fiscal management side, like that.
Yep, so essentially that one is really, again, the source was, um, looking at the M A S C, their, what they had for a policy and bringing our policy into alignment. Um, similarly for the budgets and schedules. And then there was, I believe it was, and I can double check the notes from before. Um, because I believe it was the fiscal accounting and reporting was the one that was replacing an old policy, but if you just give me a moment, I can double check on that. Um, because one of them, I had looked at the packet from last time, was replacing a prior policy, but essentially all three are to bring us in alignment with, um, M A S C.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm just pulling up the old packet. I apologize.
No problem, take your time.
Um, and so just looking at what we had last time. Yes, I, it was fiscal accounting and reporting, so that one is a replacement and the other ones are, um, additions.
Excellent. Any questions on, I guess, on, on file D A, uh, D B C or D I to start with? All right, so, great, so these are, uh, second reads, so they would require a vote to implement and we will first look for a motion to implement file D A fiscal management goals. Motion by Michael, second by Matt, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Excellent. Uh, next is file D B C, budget deadlines and schedules, looking for a motion to accept. Motion by Brendan, second by Rob. All in favor?
Mike had his.
And that is unanimous. What was that, John?
So Mike had his hand up.
Oh, okay.
It's a little thunder.
Otherwise I would've raised.
I'll give you the chance now. So, uh, uh, next one, file D I, uh, fiscal accounting and reporting, motion. Motion by John, second by Michael, then all in favor, and that is unanimous.
And so the last policy here is the one on therapy dogs. And so this, I know that there was a little bit of discussion. Um, so specifically in the policy, there's a line about the animal must be rec, by certified by recognized organizations such as Therapy Dog International. And so I know there was a question, um, brought up by Mike last time, should we say a national organization? Melissa did a little bit of research, talked to Lisa Kincaid, and it turned out that there are both state and national organizations, so it could be from either. So I think this is a discussion by the committee. Do we want to add in a statement saying a state or national? Do we wanna just leave it how it is? Um, I think that's worthy of discussion.
But doesn't it say, just a question, doesn't it say it also has to be approved by the superintendent or his designee? I just can't find the.
It says, yep, the owner must submit appropriate certifications as determined by the superintendent. Super, the certification must be current at all times.
That, that allows the superintendent to decide whether the organization is.
So the must submit appropriate certifications. Yes, that would mean that the superintendent can determine that the certification is appropriate, right? Yeah, so.
Yeah. I mean, I, 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 I kind of like how that's worded. It, you know, it doesn't preclude anybody, but it doesn't let me, you know, say that your dog's fine.
Yeah, so it's saying it has to be, but yeah, it doesn't necessarily say who. I personally have a preference. It's just really the, whatever the committee wants to discuss. I know Mike had brought it up before, so I don't know if, you know, you have other thoughts about that.
Questions or concerns, Mike?
Yeah, I, um, this is not a showstopper. I'll still go for it, but, yeah, when, when it says the animal must be certified by a recognized organization such as Therapy Dog International. I think it, it should be a state, national, or international organization. Um, otherwise, like, when you think of like CPR, first aid, you know, uh, other certifications, they usually will tell you. Has to be recognized at some level, otherwise somebody could be, be at home and, you know, print out a landing card. You're like, well, I'm an organization, right? And so, um, that's why usually first aid, like, we'll, we'll, we'll say, like, uh, I don't know, when you do summer camps, they'll say first aid, recognize, national.
Yep.
And they might say such as the Red Cross, but they'll say the word national or state or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I don't know. I mean, that's just nitpicking.
No problem.
Otherwise I'm fine with it.
All right, no problem.
I don't think there's any problem if we wanted to add in state, national, or international, um, recognized state, national, or international organizations such as Therapy Dog International.
But that, that would preclude some maybe private organization that is well qualified, so that's, that's the flip side of it. I don't care either way, really.
So there was also, um, and this is something too, I don't know that we necessarily, I know that it's available for a second reading today, but I don't think there was anything that was pressing us having this. Decided right now too. Um, so I know that, so just one of the things I had mentioned was the American Kennel Club, um, does have a list. So that's the other thing, because not necessarily all American, therapy dogs are gonna be certified by the American Kennel Club, but if you wanna be recognized as an American Kennel Club therapy dog. They have certain requirements for their organizations too. So that was just provided as a guideline as well. Um. Again, I don't necessarily, I'm presenting the information, I'm not necessarily.
I think the approach we would take, just to give you guys a sense of how I would approach it, um, is I think we would work with an organization that provides, you know, therapy dogs to. Organizations like schools or senior centers or like the police department now has a couple of therapy dogs, so we'd probably partner with them where they were getting, you know, the ther, that, that's how I would approach it. I wouldn't necessarily. You know, not to single out John, but you know, Johnny's a therapy dog. I wouldn't necessarily, I wouldn't necessarily go down that road, but, but I think, um, you know, we would look at like reputable organizations. So I, I, you know, I don't know if it's, language always matters, but I don't know if it's, if, if it's so critical here. And if you guys wanna think about it, like Robin said. I don't think that there's a, um, you know, there's, I think if we have it done before the next school year or so, cause I know that, you know, Lisa Kincaid wants to try to, you know, build this up a little bit more. Um, I think it's fine to think about it maybe for a meeting and then just make a decision, but I don't have a strong preference, but that's just how I would approach it.
The only reason I brought it before is when I ran summer camps, we actually looked into this, um, and I found out when you, and this is, was new to me at that time, like therapy dogs and all these dogs, there's. There, there's no like central body that kind of governed on how this worked. It was very confusing, like, like state parks, same thing. They, they're very confused, like. Who do we let in? Who do we, you know, whatnot? So that's why I brought it up. I, I, it might be better now, I don't know, but that was, you know, five or six years ago.
It's, yeah, I think it's more in vogue than it was even half a decade ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would prefer to have language that's a little bit more, you know, pointed at, it's like what Michael's been bringing up, just, I mean, one from a liability perspective and then two. Um, you know, I think. Just, I mean, one, from a liability perspective, and then two, um, you know, I think, you know, Kevin wins the lottery tomorrow and quits, and we hire a new superintendent, who doesn't have that good judgment, then it becomes an issue for us again. So I'd rather just do it right the first time.
I prefer you say winning the lottery than hit by a bus, because generally it's hit by a bus.
Well, I like positive. I like positive more than negatives.
I'm just saying.
Plus, you know, you might be able to pay for the new school if you win the lottery, so.
Powerball, you know, I might be, we could talk.
We could talk.
Brendan Sunshine Rickert.
So I, I take the opposite stance, so I, I, I just have to, you know, re, still considering, I'm afraid we're going to box somebody out that we don't have to when we have the ability to, the administration can just decide to, I don't even know what organization nationally or statewide certifies these trainers. So I, I just, I don't know why we want to possibly preclude some organization that we might hold in high regard at some point in the future. That's all.
Understood. Yeah, I know, you know, Franklin schools have had a very successful program, um, whether or not maybe we want to look at what they have. Theirs is through the police department, but I know that Milford Police Department, so I guess maybe we could look to see what they're doing for their level of certification, and whether it, it gets more detailed to what you and Michael were saying, or is a little bit more open to what John is suggesting too, right? So, um, it'll, we do, it sounds like we have some time to be able to reconsider this.
Yeah, this is in the making.
So maybe we.
I, I have a compromise.
Okay.
Ready? The animal must be certified by a recognized organization approved by the superintendent.
Is that what it already said?
Nope.
No?
What exactly does it say?
It's, it's, so it says the animal must be cer, right now, it says the animal must be certified by a recognized organization such as Therapy Dog International.
Yes, we can just change it to be recognized organization as approved by the superintendent, and.
And then the next line is the owner must submit appropriate certifications as determined by the superintendent or designee. So I think that that would still be a good layer though to add in, because all that's really saying is that Kevin would like sign off and say, yes, this is the appropriate credential, but we can say the superintendent can determine both what is the level of credentialing, and yes, like they have the certificate.
So just strike the first sentence.
Well, I still think it should say that, should be, the animal must be certified by a recognized organization. I think as determined by the superintendent is better than just striking it. Because that way, we still have the statement that they must be certified by a recognized organization.
So you could put must be certified by a record, recognized organization, which is approved by the superintendent. And then keep the second sentence.
I think that's fine.
You're all right with that? Did we capture that?
I did not. So I think.
Figure it off offline.
Right, that's why.
Yeah.
We can bring it back next meeting.
We'll bring it back next meeting with that kind of that little modification.
We're going to write it down now though, because I'm not going to remember that.
Yeah, exactly, that's why.
Sounds like we would be able to record it.
Right, yeah, exactly. I just want to be able to record it.
That's true, we can look back and just look.
Eight thirty-six on the tape.
Have Tim review the tape for us over there on TV.
And slow it up.
Do you need to review that, or you're all set reviewing it offline with John on the, on the, that change of verbiage?
Yeah, I think that's fine, then we'll just present it at the next meeting.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure on that. Excellent. Very good. All right, then. Moving on, so we'll pass over the vote on the therapy dog. We'll make some modifications and bring it to the next meeting. So moving on then to the report from our superintendent's.
Sure, this is, this is a really brief update on educator recruitment. We have filled twenty-five educator positions so far for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Fifteen of those are new hires, and ten are internal transfers, who, whose positions also now need to be backfilled. Our principals are engaging in hiring committees, and we have great participation on those committees from our teachers and our, um, our therapists and providers, who are very enthusiastic to be part of the process. Currently, we have nine additional educator positions posted and are actively interviewing for other openings. So I don't want to give it a set number, because it does change, because we get, you know, somebody decides to retire late, or somebody transitions out. But, um, at least that gives you a sense of where we are in the process. So it's, it's happening, it's aggressive. And it, we have a lot of hiring to do because of all the new, new positions. So here's kind of the, the bad news part of it. And I've talked about this before, but we continue to see our applications decreasing, which is not unique to Milford. It's part of a regional, state, and national trend. The shortages that have been pervasive in the south, southwest, and west of the, western parts of the United States for the past decade have started to hit New England.
So you're saying it's not you?
I'm saying it's not, it's not anybody. It's just a, it's a, it's a, yeah, it isn't me. I'll go with that. And I like the lottery winner thing. I've shared, again, this information with you before, but we continue to see declines in enrollment in undergraduate and graduate teacher education programs. And high need areas such as STEM, world language, E L, and special education continue to be very challenging to find quality candidates. One, one positive is I think we have a very competitive kind of, um, package that we offer here in Milford. And I think, you know, it makes us competitive compared to the districts directly around us. I think we've become more competitive to districts east of us recently, so I think that's a good thing too. Because I think that's going to, that's going to become more and more important as this pool of candidates starts to shrink. As a district, and we've talked about this too, we've attended and hosted job fairs, partnered with colleges and universities around grants to support licensure and college programs for prospective teachers. We use social media, our professional networks to identify potential candidates. And we, you know, I think we hit the local market very hard to, right around here, because I think, you know, one of the things we really have is a lot of teachers who are local, and there's real investment there. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about any of this.
Any questions on that aspect, that subject matter?
We're making, we're making good progress. I think, you know, the, some of the areas of high need are going to be challenging to, to, to fill. And the emergency licenses are going away too, which is going to add a layer of that challenge, because that's helped us the last couple of years, really, to, to kind of fill some gaps that we found. So I, you know, I had my hand on the commissioner's when he shook my hand when we were at the Board of Education, and I might have shared that with him, that, you know, we may want to look at some different ways to, you know, get people in the door and create pipelines for, you know, people who can become career teachers.
Certainly.
So that's what I've got.
Thank you for that update. I appreciate it. All right, then, moving on to, from our report from, from the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources, Mrs. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have for the committee's approval this evening, six warrants in the amount of one million, one hundred sixty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-one cents.
Excellent. Looking for a motion to approve the warrant. Motion by Michael, second. All right, Robin, all in favor. That is unanimous.
The committee has the latest budget update, um, moving forward into the final month of our fiscal year. We are still solvent, and I expect us to remain that way. Personnel update?
Any questions on that, on the, on the budget update? Not seeing any questions, so personnel?
A, a list of the latest appointments from our previous, uh, meeting is, um, there for your viewing. No vote is required.
And just one comment on that, actually.
Sure.
I'm going to slow you down, sorry. Um, I think it was great to see how many tho, those new positions on there were grant funded. So I'm assuming kudos goes out to, to our, our grant department, so just wanted to.
Which is Nancy.
Exactly. The name may have escaped me for a second, that's why I said it then. So, so thank you for filling that in.
I will share that with her tomorrow.
Exactly, yeah. Senior moment, sorry. So, but thank you to Nancy and the grant writing department, obviously, um, because, yeah, I, I just, it just, it, it stuck out to me of how, the number of positions that were on that list, and, and it, majority were grant funded. So it was great to see.
Thank you. The update on the, um, Milford High School roof is, unfortunately, they wanted to come out this week. For whatever reason, they, they're asking to be on the roof at late afternoon into early evening. I don't know if it's a time of day. I didn't really ask, but they would expect to be on the roof between five and seven, seven-thirty to do the full assessment. So I needed a night custodian to be available, and I, it, this week, I couldn't find anybody that could get them up on the roof. So we're doing it next week. So that will be done next week. We'll have better answers as to what's happening, and if we're going to qualify for the warranty extension. The turf and the track bid update. So I am recommending, uh, that the school committee reject the current bidders. We had two bidders, one just for the turf, and we had one for the turf in the track, but did not follow the, um, bid guidelines. And instead of giving two bids, one track cost and one turf cost, they combined it and submitted it. But within the bid, there are very clear guidelines on how you submit your bid, what you write on the exterior of the envelope. They were listed in the central register at the state as two separate projects. So we cannot entertain that, that bid. And the turf bid, um, was not, it, it wasn't, um, advantageous on the pricing side. So it was an eighty thousand dollar difference to do just the turf than the other vendor that submitted the total for the track and the turf. So my assumption is that that turf bid is very high. So again, I'm recommending that we reject the bids. The good news is, I have everything ready to go tomorrow morning, and we will have a two-week window of opportunity, and we will have all the bids back, um, on June fifteenth or sixteenth. And, um, we're still on the same timeframe for the project. So that's the good news.
Thank you for that update. Any questions in regards to that? Go ahead.
My only concern, if they come back on the sixteenth, is how that gets approved, because I think that's our last meeting until.
It's the fifteenth, June fifteenth.
So I don't think we have another one until.
July.
Late July.
Thanks for noting that.
Yeah, we could schedule.
We could schedule.
I just wanted to bring that up.
We could do a quick Zoom, I think.
We could.
So we should probably preemptively set one for that Monday or Tuesday night.
Perfect.
Certainly. No, that's good. Thank you. That's it.
Uh, that's my question, just, just on the off chance that things do get delayed, um, has, uh, has Pete Boucher been notified that like maybe we should not have any home football games for the first two weeks of September? Is it along those lines, like just?
He's, yeah, I can answer that one. He's, he's building contingencies based on the, because even if everything, even if the bids came in.
It's going to get tight.
Prior.
Yeah.
There could be some issue that could arise, whenever you.
Weather, I mean.
Whatever you.
Weather is, no, weather's real, yeah, it's absolutely real.
We could have a dry summer for everything to happen. If it rains.
Well, my lawn doesn't appreciate that, but.
Yeah, so.
Come look at the new turf, it'll be green.
Just don't put your lawnmower on it.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah, excellent. All right, any other questions on the, those bids and how to? All right. So I guess the question is, we are looking to, for a motion then to reject the two bids, one bid?
Both bids.
Both bids? All right, so reject the two bids, uh, for the turf and track replacement, right? Is that all right? All right, motion by Matt, second by Michael, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Great. Thank you for that update.
Okay, so, um, the update on the Kubota is, at this point, I am not comfortable without the school committee's kind of direction on which way we want to go with the, um, repair cost. So I received a call from Kubota, um, sales office. I believe the Kubota is sitting and waiting for our decision. I was not aware of that. Um, so she, it went over in length the situation with the Kubota. Essentially, from the back end to the front end of the Kubota, it is completely seized. Everything is non-functioning. Uh, every control in every, um, valve, the axle has to be replaced, it's rotted. So at this point, um, I don't know that to make the investment of another fourteen thousand, when we spent twelve thousand in twenty nineteen, I don't think that at this point, it's recommended to put another fifteen grand into this machine. Um, so we have a couple of options. One is, without the machine, we still need to do the sidewalks, um, around the Woodland School. Essentially, that's what the Kubota's main function was. It was going to have the ability to throw sand and to clear the sidewalks. We don't have a place to store. Part of the problem is that the machine goes into one of those storage containers, which I think is pretty airtight. And so if it's sitting there from April until we bring it out, maybe November or December, um, that's a long time to be sitting in there and not have any ventilation and have the potential. I, I think even if it was, um, you know, washed and cleaned, I just don't think that's a viable option to have a, a machine like that in a storage container. So if in fact, we declared that surplus and worked out a trade with, for whatever it's worth, I don't even know the value at this point, because it is completely seized and rotted. If we go with, um, say, a snow blower tractor type of machine, so that whether that machine comes to the high school and we move our snow blowers over to Woodland, because there's more sidewalks here than there are over at Woodland, that's a decision we could make. But I think at this point, we should see what we can do on a trade and get a piece of equipment that we can actually manage.
Can I throw one more variable into this equation? Um, this also brings up the conversation about the cold storage facility that we had talked about initially with, um, with the Woodland grounds that we just, it just, it hasn't gotten off the ground. And I think that there was a, a recent settlement. And that might be something that we could access to put a cold storage facility for, that's more appropriate for equipment. But again, I don't want to hit that tonight. I think you should just address that issue, but I just want to throw that out there, because that's something we, I think we need to think about. It's not front of mind.
Matt?
So for, for anyone who had, hadn't gone through like the invoices and stuff, just a little more context. This, this machine costs thirty, almost thirty-eight thousand dollars in twenty seventeen. It's six years old. If we put more repairs into it, we're talking about putting an additional twenty-seven thousand dollars into a machine that has less than two hundred hours on it. Which is insanity, because that really breaks down about thirty-three hours of use a year. So I, I support the idea of getting rid of it. Obviously, it wouldn't be this bad if it was properly maintained, I, I think, but, um, we don't know the price of a, of a sidewalk tractor.
I didn't engage in that conversation as of yet. I really wanted to see what direction the school committee wanted to go.
I mean, personally, I think that would be a good thing to look at. It would also just be potentially, given the way the last couple of winters have been going, and just the general weather trend, um, maybe it makes sense to just buy a handful more of high-end snow blowers. I know they're walk behind, they're not exactly the fastest thing on the planet, not so comfortable if it's freezing, but, and if you're using a machine that big to move snow thirty-three hours a year, um, we're getting close to just getting more shovels. It's getting that bad, so. Um, I, I, I don't think there's any, unless there's anybody else has any other reason why this machine would be here, we're not digging holes, we're not doing anything else with it. It's really nothing for me.
Um, I think we're lucky to have John. What do you think?
I don't think it makes any sense to keep this thing.
You're more familiar with this.
I think we would have more than thirty-three hours if it wasn't incapacitated for half of those winters, but that's a different point.
Any other questions on that?
If one question, Kathy, would be, at the other schools, would, that's utilized as a resource to, to clear and to spread sand and salt. What are we utilizing at the other schools?
Snow blowers.
Snow blowers, all right, so.
Shovels.
Yeah. Is there any difference in the amount of pathways that need to be cleared at Brookside, Memorial, Stacy in comparison to, to Woodland?
Woodland, that really was a gift from the building committee, for the maintenance department.
Okay. All right, so basically, the, what is, what is functional at, at Memorial, Brookside, and Stacy, and here at the high school, I guess, too, right? Could be just as functional there at Woodland. Woodland just had the luxury of having this piece of equipment based on what the building committee was able to, to work through.
Provide, right.
Okay. So kind of, my question on it, so yeah, that's going to be some type of surplus, so.
So I, I can bring it back. If the school committee declares it surplus, that will allow me to engage with negotiating in, um, trying to figure out if, if they will even take it. I mean, I, you know, hopefully, and then I'll bring back our options after talking with, um, the salespeople. I would like an answer tonight though, only because if there's, you know, any year-end money that maintenance, as Matt has already said, still has seventy-four thousand, I would like to use that to offset the cost.
Michael?
Uh, I moved to declare surplus.
Anyway, motion by Michael to declare surplus, second by Brendan, all in favor. And I think one other thing, John, I'll look over you, probably maybe one of the people who's connected with, might be Scott Christopher, now in the highway department.
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to, I would, I was going to suggest that. And I also wonder if he, if he would have any use for.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna, I would, I was gonna suggest that, and I also wonder if he, if he would have any use for it, probably not by the sounds of it, but I know, we've declared vehicle surplus that were just not usable, but there were things like stainless steel beds on them that he would pull off and put onto his other, his other vehicles.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But I don't know that this direct, this piece, he has anything that it might directly transfer to, or if, um, parks might be there, so.
So you'll have that conversation and let me know, John?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Very good, alright, and, alright, and, uh, we do not have any gifts tonight, alright, so, excellent. So, subcommittee updates, any subcommittees have met, I know, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll do the update for policies, so the policy, subcommittee met earlier tonight, and so, most of the time was spent reviewing the student wellness policy, um, and so, there were some questions, so we're gonna get...
I can't hear you.
Yeah, sorry, so the...
The student what?
The student wellness policy, um, and so, there were some questions and areas of clarification, so we are gonna reach out to the director of nursing and then review it again, but then, um, the plan is, hopefully, in the near future, to bring it for a first and second reading to the committee. We also started talking about fundraising and solicitations, um, brought that topic up again, um, but again, it, it was the beginning of a conversation, and, and more conversation will be continuing on that as well, and then we also started talking about the school safety policies. Um, but none of these policies at this point, any changes were made that are ready to come forward for a first reading at the next meeting, but, um, especially with the student wellness one, we do hope to get that to the committee, again, in the near future, so we can start talking about, uh, adopting some revisions there.
Thank you for the update. Any other subcommittees that have met in the last couple weeks? Not seeing any, so, very good, thank you. Um, next agenda item, then will be future agenda items, any suggestions for next week's meeting? It is, the next couple are going to be, um, um, pretty jam-packed with the, the three school improvement plans next week, and then to the following meeting after that, so, so.
Have we, um, I don't remember if I mentioned this or not, about the transportation and the, and the over at the, tonight department, a discussion about potentially splitting transportation director and community use to give more time for transportation focus, I know that, that can't happen in the next couple weeks, we're pretty...
Yeah, um...
But, um, down the road.
Yeah, certainly, that's, that needs to be a discussion, or can be a discussion, I should say, right down the road, so certainly, uh, we'll keep that on the radar. Um, we'll, we'll, we'll fit that in, obviously, remind me if, if...
Yeah, maybe early next year.
That's what I'm thinking too, and, yeah, yeah, sounds good, thank you for bringing that up, okay?
Yeah, and I think that's something we have to figure out by the end of this calendar year, as we move into budget season and...
That's what I'm thinking.
And contract renewals and such.
For next year, yeah, right, yeah, yeah, okay, excellent, sounds good. Any other future agenda items, not seeing any, so, excellent, so that moves us on to adjournment, looking for a motion to adjourn? Motion by Michael, second, by Robin, all in favor, that is unanimous, great, thank you, and good night, everyone.